Thank you for joining us. We'll begin with the invocation by Father Stratton D. Rosensky from Saint Nicholas Greek Orthodox Church, which will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance if you all join me in standing. Welcome, Father.
Thank you, Your Honor, for the privilege. Let us pray, beginning with Psalm 100. Let us make a joyful shout to the Lord. All your lands serve the Lord with gladness. Come before His presence with singing. Know that the Lord, that the Lord He is God. It is He who has made us and not we ourselves. We are His people and the sheep of His pasture. Enter into gates with thanksgiving and to His courts with praise. Be thankful to Him and bless His name, for the Lord is good. His mercy is everlasting and His truth endures through all generations. Oh heavenly God, we are reminded in your sacred Psalm that we look to you as the divine shepherd of your people and you maintain the righteous guidance to your earthly flock. We gather in deliberation and thought this evening and humbly request your guidance and wisdom in our discussion and decisions for our people. We beseech you to direct our paths in thought, love, and respect for everyone, respecting, representing the breadth and plurality which comprises the citizens of this fine city. Fill us with your heavenly virtue to overcome our earthly challenges and view them as opportunities which you have placed at our doorstep. With each opportunity placed before us, let us be filled with respect and cooperation and fellowship reflecting your holy image. Instill your divine and ever-abiding wisdom upon our entrusted civic leaders and staff. Protect those who watch and guard us under the shelter of your wings. We offer our heartfelt prayers for your divine and heavenly blessings upon the citizens of our city. And we offer our firm prayers and thoughts in your name always. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. The April 2nd, 2012 Troy City Council meeting will begin. Roll call, please, Mrs. Bitner.
Mayor Daniels.
Here.
Councilmember Campbell.
Here.
Councilmember Fleming.
Here.
Councilmember Henderson.
Here.
Mayor Proton McGinnis.
Here.
Councilmember Slater.
Here.
Councilmember Teetz.
Here.
Form present. The first item on our agenda is we have a legislative update by the Honorable State Representative Marty Nolenberg. Welcome, Representative Nolenberg.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council, and thank you, citizens, for allowing me to kind of tell you what's happening in Lansing. I want to set the stage a little bit. Obviously, the budgets are being worked on. Our state budget begins on October 1st, so we're sort of halfway through the year, through that cycle, we're working on the budget that comes due on October 1st. So, I kind of want to set the stage. You know, last year, before Governor Snyder took office, we were faced with the same $1.8 billion deficit, which was an ongoing problem. We didn't have any money in the savings account. Our long-term debts were going by leaps and bounds. Our budget processes were a failure. We had to shut down. Three of the budgets got done after the due date. One year, we shut down. It was just not a good situation. No certainty for anybody, not for our school districts, not for local use of government, not for those individuals that rely on the services from the state of Michigan. So, it's not a good situation. Last year, I know I mentioned this to you, I mentioned this last year, but we balanced the budget for two years, so it's a two-year rolling budget. It's the earliest budget that we got done in over 30 years. We got it done in May. It wasn't due until October 1st. We put some dashboards and best practices in place so we have more transparency and more accountability. We paid down over $5 billion of long-term debt. We put over $500 million in a variety of savings accounts. $255 million went to the budget stabilization fund. $100 million went to the school aid fund. And $133 million went to the school employee retirement system. So, we've got some healthy fund balances with that. We also got rid of some waste fraud and abuse. We closed a loophole on bridge cards. You might have heard college students using these bridge cards, which in a past life would used to be called food stamps, and they were buying beer, wine, and things like that. So, we put a stop to that. Lottery reform. You might have heard about a guy that won $2 million and he was still receiving food stamps after he won. We put a stop to that. And so, anybody that wins a lottery ticket over $1,000, that name will be forwarded to the Department of Human Services so that that agency can, that department can judge whether or not they still qualify. So, we're doing a lot of things to reform government. We also undid the largest tax increase in Michigan history. So, as a result of all of this, we have more certainty to all of our stakeholders and also to our job providers. And at the end of the day, if we can create a better business environment for them, we have more jobs in the state. Moody's, one of the rating agencies, rated Michigan on the positive side. And at the end of the day, government is judged based on how well they perform financially. So, we're on the uptick. The budget was a key turning point, according to Moody's. We got national trust out of this. So, Michigan is doing a lot of great things. We need to make a lot of tough decisions to get us there. Now, the proposed budget, and I provide that with you just as a framework for our current budget that's being worked on. Again, this budget will have to be completed by October 1st. It will be balanced for two years is the goal. We'll get it done early. The goal is to get it done by the end of May. We'll have dashboards and best practices. Again, that's not going to change. We're going to continue to pay down more long-term debt so that we're not burdening our kids and grandkids. In the proposed budget, we have an additional $300 million going into savings accounts, $130 million into the budget stabilization fund, and $179 million into the school employee retirement system. So, we'll have about $800 million in a savings account, the largest savings account since 2008. And that's the last time you had a savings account, and I think most of you know how important that is. So, as a result of this, we expect that we'll have, you know, improved credit rating. And obviously, with the better credit rating, less money the state of Michigan can borrow, less of a burden on our taxpayer. That's the goal in all of this. So, the governance priority in the current budget includes, you know, public safety, education, infrastructure. They're all receiving increases, so that's a good thing. Revenue sharing, the constitutional portion of it, we'll see a 2% increase. We have some new best practices in place called EVIP, short for Economic Vitality Incentive Program, and you can receive up to 9%. So, that's something that you ought to be aware of, and hopefully, you'll capture that for you. And so, you know, we're doing a lot of great things. It's trying to make the budget more transparent, more accountable. It can't be irresponsible. Just last week, there was an amendment to a bill offered by one of our Detroit reps that wanted to add a $200 million appropriation to the existing budget. And frankly, that's just irresponsible. That would wipe out $200 million out of our savings account. And Detroit, as we all know, has, I mean, they're faced with the $12 billion deficit. That's their long-term liabilities. But until they can demonstrate that they're spending taxpayer money prudently and wisely, we can't just continue to give them money. We need more accountability. So, that's sort of the, I think, the framework that the legislature is operating. Obviously, the budget, we want to get it done in May because we will know by that point in time what the projected revenues will be. And so, both the House and the Senate, working with the governor, will get it done at that point in time. I do want to mention, I know, you know, John Zurlag is, we don't know what his current situation is, but John has been very helpful to me on a bill that I've been working on. I mentioned this in our last city council meeting, and essentially, a bill that would require that the state of Michigan not lose its federal match money. And John actually proposed the idea to me, and he actually came up to Lansing about a month and a half ago and testified in committee. And it passed out of our House floor about two weeks ago. And the senator in the other chamber has expressed to me that he would take it up, you know, sometime in April, May. So, I wanted to thank John for that. And so, with that, I'm happy to take questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Councilman Fleming?
Yeah. Thank you, Representative Nolenberg, for giving us that update. Could you enlighten us as to what's being done to put more money toward our roads, to improving our roads in this state?
Yeah, that's a great question. There's a variety of things that we're doing, and there's been some general fund appropriation, you know, to end out that would, you know, find ways to make, that would use technology to improve the processes of making sure roads are built more effectively and that we're staying on top of these things. And there's still an ongoing debate about, you know, additional funding, you know, for roads. But the long and the short of it is, we've never seen a general, since I've been in the legislature, we have not had a state appropriation towards infrastructure at all. And obviously, the bridges are probably at the top of the list. And so, we need more funding for roads, and as we get our government, state of Michigan government, more streamlined, I think you'll see some additional money going towards that.
Mayor Proton McGinnis?
I have a question for you. Do you have an update for us on personal property tax or any reform that currently being discussed or that you want to share?
Yeah, I mean, that's sort of been an ongoing debate. I know you were at the conference last week when Lieutenant Governor Kelly spoke about this. And I think the thing to remember about the personal property tax, it's really a business equipment tax. And people need to understand that if you own equipment, you're a business owner and you own equipment, you're going to pay a tax on that equipment. And it's very burdensome to business owners of all kinds. And Michigan is one of the few states that has such a business equipment tax. And so, there's an effort to try to get rid of that or streamline it. And obviously, that will impact the local units of government. And so, we got to find out how we can sort of keep locals, you know, homeless. Not sure how that's going to play out, but I know that the legislature is certainly concerned about that. But we need to find another revenue source to sort of replace this business equipment tax, as I call it, as you call it, personal property tax. And it's a tricky balance to make everybody whole.
Well, I actually learned quite a bit at the conference, and so I think I'm going to be sharing that with council members that are interested. But it is a complex issue, and I was enlightened to hear that they're kind of looking at things from all, from all angles and really focusing in and working on potential ideas for phasing things in and out, and it's not going to be an overnight thing. But obviously, as a local municipality, we're very concerned to make sure that it's not a revenue source that's ripped out from underneath us. So, I think it's important for us to keep in contact with you and make sure that we know what's going on so that we can plan accordingly here.
And one of the things that wasn't talked about, and I know that we talked about it in the House, is there's a number of tax credits that are due to fall off and go away. So, if we can use some of that money to kind of get it back to the local use of government, so we're not forced to increase taxes somewhere else. We're using existing tax credits to sort of help subsidize that. And there's, you know, if we took all of them, we could probably replace the personal property tax with that. And some of these things will take, some of these things will expire over a period of time. And so, we got to try to match that up somehow.
Thank you very much, Representative Nolenberg. Nice to see you.
Thank you.
Next, we have a service presentation award to the Friends of Troy Seniors. Now, this is a brief analysis, but if anyone would like to read more about what the Friends of Troy Seniors are doing, there's a nicely written letter in the agenda packet online, so you might want to look at that this evening. But if the Friends would come to the podium? This is a community service award that's presented to the Friends of Troy Seniors in recognition and appreciation of outstanding contributions and unselfish devotion for the advancement of parks, recreation, and leisure services in the community of Troy awarded on the 14th day of March 2012. Congratulations.[922.41][922.41](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, Mayor Daniels. Thank you, the Council, for taking the time. I need to thank John Zurlag. And John especially because last spring, as most of you remember, we had a little tax problem. And John said to me, "Don't give up. Get in there and volunteer." So, John, to you and your staff, thank you. To Jeff Bigler and his staff, I want to thank them because there's no way we could be where we are today, especially Carl Levon. I'd like to introduce each one of our advisory board. Henry Allerman is our executive director and also our money finder. Marlene Presby, Joanna Stevens. And the glue that holds us all together is Diana Lottie, who is our secretary and who operates the office. None of this would be possible without volunteers. We need all the volunteers we can get. We've accomplished a lot. We have a lot more to accomplish. We hope that someday, there'll be a little more money in this city so that we can accomplish a lot more than where we're going each day. And to each of you, thank you.
April is volunteer month, so I think we're going to be seeing a number of groups of people coming up during public comments in the next few meetings. There are no carryover items or public hearings, so we now move to public comments. The audience should be aware that all comments are to be directed to the council rather than to the city administration or the audience. Also, there's a timer in front of the mayor's chair that turns yellow when there's one minute of speaker time remaining and turns red when the speaker's time is up. In order to make the meeting move more orderly and out of respect, please do not clap during the meeting. And please do not use expletives or make derogatory or disparaging comments about any one person or group. If you do so, there may be immediate consequences, including having the microphone turned off, being asked to leave the meeting, and/or the deletion of speaker comments for any rebroadcast of the meeting. Speakers should also be careful to avoid saying anything that would subject them to civil liability, such as slander or defamation. Please avoid these consequences and voluntarily assist us in maintaining the decorum befitting this great city. There are eight people signed up. The first speaker is a young lady named Janet Jones, and she's from the Teens Taking Action group. She's going to talk to us about spring break. Janet?
Hi, my name is Jeanette Jones, and as Mayor Daniels said, my name is, sorry, my name is Jeanette Jones. I'm president, vice president of the club Teens Taking Action. And today, I'm here to talk to you about spring break. This week, many students in Troy will be having spring break, so they'll be able to enjoy and relax some time off school. In order to promote our youth to participate in more safe, healthy, and fun activities, Troy every year has what we call Spring Break Troy Style. And basically, what it is, is it's a list of fun activities for youth. From, there's an all-night gaming activity, all-night gaming activity to Laser Quest, to bowling. So, just a bunch of activities that basically promote kids to do activities that are not associated with drugs and alcohol. There's even some discounts for food, like TCBY and Subway. And all they have to do is bring in their student ID and come up and have some fun. So, just to make you all aware, if you have kids that are on spring break this week, tell them to come out. And there's more information on the website. It's www.troymichigan.gov/springbreak.
Thank you very much. Next is Linda Kenny. Ms. Kenny?
Good evening. First, I wish to emphasize that my presence here is neither in support of nor against Mayor Janice Daniels. Instead, is specifically in opposition to the ironic recall effort. Why ironic? The crux of the recall effort appears to be alleged inappropriate behavior by the mayor. The irony? The recall supporters apparently feel that they themselves should not be bound by rules of appropriate behavior. Being approached while trying to spend time with your children at the library on Saturday, ironic since it was in large part through Ms. Daniels' efforts that the doors were even open that day, and being asked to sign the petition, being approached at your child's school during a family event and being asked to sign the petition, and being called an anti-American communist for refusing to sign the petition are all examples of inappropriate behavior. Politicizing family events and name-calling have no place in legitimate democratic process. Recall supporters have been very vocal, personally, on the web, and in print, about Mayor Daniels' intolerance. Yet they have seemed fit to insult and belittle people they deem to be her supporters or who simply won't join their crusade. This is tolerance? According to one recall supporter, those who support Ms. Daniels, i.e. anyone unwilling to sign the petition, don't take government seriously. There are approximately 56,000 registered voters in the city of Troy, and I did get that from the newspaper, so if it's wrong, I apologize. Less than 15,000 voted in the mayoral election. I was one of them. Deciding which candidate to vote for was time-consuming, and the election was not held at a time convenient to me, but I voted, and I voted conscientiously, the very essence of our political process. How is that not taking government seriously? 40,000 other residents took the political process significantly less seriously by not voting at all. If any of the 40,000 who didn't vote are assisting in the petition drive because they are unhappy with the election results, they got no more than they deserve. Nothing the mayor has done or said seems to be in contrast to the platform upon which she campaigned. For that reason, not that it is anyone's business, and that reason alone, I will not support the recall effort. 15,000 people took the time to vote. The majority of them voted for Ms. Daniels. The election was duly determined, and the city should have moved forward. Name-calling, false fact-quoting, determining guilt by association, and innuendo are not examples of mature and diplomatic behavior. I participated in the political process. I listened to both candidates. I checked what facts I could, and I voted. Now, I wish to be left alone. I don't want my doorbell rung. I don't want to be approached in public, especially when I am with my children, and I certainly don't wish to be called names. I expect this courtesy and respect for my rights from both sides, those supporting the recall and those supporting the mayor. I take no exception to any recall campaign run with respect for all citizens, courtesy and adherence to truth. This campaign does not seem to be able to lay claim to certain of these virtues, and accordingly, I want no part of it. I felt entitled to respect for my right to participate in the political process, and now I feel entitled to respect for my right to abstain. And I would hope the council would support those of us that feel that once we voted, we don't have to participate any further. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. At first, let me introduce myself. I am Dr. Jacek Wizerbicky. I'm a nuclear physicist, working in Cancer Treatment Center, and resident of Troy since 1993. On the top of it, I have a very unique experience because 25 years ago, my family and me were granted political asylum in United States. And living almost 40 years in communist Poland, I know the alternative to democracy, freedom, law and order. So, therefore, seeing very disturbing things happening in our city, I decided to start writing letter to editor to Troy Times. I have written two of them. They're republished, and I would like to read my recent one. So, letter to editor. Put my glasses on. Democracy is a great achievement of our civilization. It gives us rights, but also requires a lot of self-discipline. The demand for more and more rights will eventually turn democracy into anarchy. In a democratic society, we have the right to elect our representatives, and we also have an emergency button, recall of elected representatives before the end of their term. Recall is not the bread and butter of democracy, and it should be used in extreme situations like illegal activity, gross inefficiency, et cetera. It is worrisome that some groups in our society start using recall as a common procedure. In Wisconsin, unions are orchestrating the recall of governor and state senators because they don't like legislation being passed. Our city is facing similar situation. Matt Binkowski and his group started the process of recalling Troy's mayor just two months after her inauguration. If it was in the middle of Daniel's term and Troy was heading towards bankruptcy, then I might sympathize with the recall or even join their effort. But today, our positions are different. They think that they exercise democracy. I think they are promoting anarchy. They think that their action is political and serious. I think that their action is schoolyard bullying with a political facade. They think that their action is good for resident of Troy. I think the recall activity will cost money, our money. But maybe I'm wrong. So, Mr. Binkowski and others, step forward. Introduce yourself. Tell us who you are. What do you do? How long have you resided in Troy? How do you contribute to our city, paying taxes? And are any organizations providing financial support for this recall? In addition to this, that's the end of my letter. In addition to this, I have two or three comments. First one is, this letter is not a letter of support for Janice Daniels. It's a letter of support for mayor, office of mayor of Troy. I would do the same five years ago and 15 years ago. The second thing is, I have an appeal to council members, former council members, former mayor Louis Schilling, and everybody else who is politically active in this city to support, to put aside their personal feelings, to put aside their egos and support our mayor. Because if this petition is successful, our city will no longer be the same. Once opened, the door will be open forever, and there will be recall after recall, and we will be, our city will be simply laughable. So, therefore, once more, I am appealing to everybody to support and to stop this fires that is going on. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Richard Peters? Richard Peters? Mr. Bloomingdale? I'm sorry.
Good evening, folks of Troy, council. The term tolerance was spoken earlier. As you know, I do not support the tolerance, but I do support people's right to be concerned about their government. I see this not only in local areas, but nationally and internationally as well. You know, we're all aware of what's going on down in Miami and a few other things down in, even internationally. Couple of things I'd like to talk about, like healthcare. I would hope that the court doesn't strike it down because I think if they do, you know, like auto insurance, et cetera, may be the next step, although I'm not sure it's the same. the same. Also, I'd like to see the, my friend, Mr. Bloomingdale, I'd like to see, I believe he's up for appointment here for an Economic Development Authority, at least I want to put a plug for him as a friend. Also, on labor law, oh, I know what, because the fuel prices are so high, the gas prices, they're four dollars a gallon, I would hope that the government consider withdrawing contracts or threatening to withdraw contracts either from brokerage firms or even from the oil industry itself unless they bring them down to the rightful level. I think that it doesn't make sense that you have high unemployment and high fuel prices at the same time. Also, I was kind of wondering why the state wasn't asked about the effect of our environment right now, what's going on with it, what's going on with our lakes, the impact of glacial melting on our lakes, et cetera. And, let's see, another couple of things here, too. On the union laws, if you look it up, clearly, the, what was that, Act 1935, well, it allows for collective bargaining, and for the courts to say that, the Wagner Act, that it doesn't allow, that to me makes no sense, it's sort of like the nullification doctrine. But any rate, I would hope that the unions, because that affects everybody, but I hope that the unions follow up on that. And finally, in the Middle East, I do not think either Hillary Clinton or the United States of America has a right to tell Syrian people how to run their government. It's up to them to decide if they want the leaders or not. So, and that goes pretty much throughout the area. I understand, and we all hope that people do better, but I think in that area, we've overstepped them out. That's pretty much about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peters. Mr. Bloomingdale? Good evening.
I thank you for your patience with Mr. Peters, the mayor. If anybody has a copy of the financial report ending June of 11, if you follow along, most of the numbers that I've taken or that I'm going to mention, all of them came from that document, the financial statement for the year ending June 2011. Council, tonight, I would like to direct your attention to the upcoming special budget study sessions, scheduled for the 23rd and 30th of April. In reviewing the booklet I just mentioned, the City of Troy's Financial Summary for the Year Ending June 30 of 2011, I'm reminded of the demands that we have placed on the people who serve us as city employees. In the last seven years, we have reduced our full-time city staff by 35 percent, from a high point of 490 employees to the current level of 320. In the same seven-year period, from June of 2004 to June of 2011, our resident population has decreased by 6 percent from 86,000 people to 81,000 people. Consequently, we have 320 people doing almost as much work as the 490 people we're doing in seven years ago. In addition, all 320 of these employees have had their pay reduced by 10 percent at a cost of several thousand dollars per employee. As of June 20, Troy has 31,000 households with a median household income of $87,000 per year. We can afford to pay for the goods and services we use. How is it, then, that a highly educated community of 81,000 people with a median household income of $87,000 can convince themselves that the 320 city employees working for them should contribute several thousand dollars each to resolve a problem that they didn't create, while at the same time refused to pass a millage that would cost each of us two, three, maybe four hundred dollars each? For me, it would be wrong, to the point of being morally repugnant, to ask these 300 employees for more as we residents do nothing. Therefore, my challenge to each of you as city council members is this: to exempt the city staff from any further cuts until we, as citizens, step up. Most of us can afford to do so. Now, there's a portion of our fellow citizens that can't. We need to exempt those from any increases. But they should not be used as an excuse for the rest of us to do nothing. As a resident of Troy for over 41 years, I can testify to the fact that this city has been a great place to live, raise and educate children, and retire in. And I personally stand ready and able to do my part to keep it that way. Mayor, thank you. I appreciate the time.
Thank you, sir.
Well, you know, one thing I still have is a few seconds left. I hope you stay. I know it'll be hard, but if you can, we need you. Thank you, the mayor.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, mayor. Good evening, city council. Well, I thought the transit center was more or less settled, but apparently it isn't from what people have told me regarding the petitions that have been going around. But I also believe it never will be settled, as long as the people of Troy are being fooled into thinking it won't cost them anything. For about two years, I have repeatedly asked specific questions regarding the cost of the transit center. The previous mayor and council would never give me the answers. Now I ask this council. In fiscal year 2009, 2010, $38,142.50 was paid to one consulting company for work on the transit center. There is just one example. My question is, who paid that bill? And also, who paid the engineering fees and studies? The lobbyists and consultants? The staff time, including legal department time and expenses, promotional costs, brochures, et cetera? If the federal government paid, then let's have the dates and the amounts that the federal government paid that into the coffers of Troy. And I hope we don't have no more answers like, well, it came from designated funds, because that is merely a smokescreen. If that's the case, who designated the funds, and where did the funds come from? And now it's budget time, and time for transparency. The previous councils, transparency has been something you preach, but you do not practice. I recall Councilwoman McGinnis asking why we don't have more information on the transit center. And that was like nine years after the plan was formed. Now it's budget time, and time to take a realistic look at the financial mess we are in with the Downtown Development Authority. Previous councils have allowed the DDA to waste millions of dollars on Big Beaver while the rest of the city roads deteriorated. And when the financial bunch came in 2009, and the previous council threatened to close the library, the city manager, when questioned, stated that the DDA did not have any money. They had just spent their last $2 million changing the color of the cement at Big Beaver and Rochester Road. We are in this position because city management and DDA spent money like it gluttonese. And now it is this council that is stuck with the results. And all of this was done on for years before Janice Daniels ever came on the scene. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Savage. Mary Ann Brigardi?
Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, Mary Ann Council, and thank you. I have given each of you a copy of the proposed tree preservation policy revision of 2006, one copy for each of you. This was the proposed revision that was postponed indefinitely in 2005. The reason it was not adopted was that there were overreaches on the government part in the policy. Government officials were able to walk on your property at any time, on your personal property, be able to measure trees and so on. There was even a fine for not edging your sidewalks. So I agreed that, you know, there were good reasons not to adopt that policy. Also, it's 45 pages of very technical material, and I can't imagine throwing that at any developer or anyone. So I agreed that it needed to be shortened, it needed to be simplified, and corrections needed to be made as to governmental powers. However, to abandon it completely has left us with no protection for our trees. And it seems to me that in life, everything is about balance. And here we have it again. We have on one side, overregulation, cumbersome, burdensome, stagnating, no good. But on this side, we have nothing. And what we need to do is get something that's reasonable and in the middle, that suits our needs, but still doesn't thwart development. We don't want to do that either. So, where did I get, okay. The tree preservation policy that we had before 2005 cannot be found anywhere. I can't find it. And as far as I can see, it's gone. I did watch a planning commission meeting years ago where Dick Carlisle, the consultant, was saying that with this new, they were writing the zoning ordinances, that everything that existed now would be gone, be wiped away. So it just appears that it was. But we did have a tree preservation policy, we most definitely did. I have corroboration on that point with very credible people in this community. We had it. But if we don't get this fixed and get it fixed now, we will lose our trees, and it will be too late. I provided you with a list of nine areas that residents have brought to light on our Facebook book page called Save Our Trees. That page is not up anymore, but it was up for several months. And I hope that you've had a chance to visit those areas and to see it for yourselves. And if you haven't, I'm supplying that to you again in hopes that you will take the time to investigate. If you send this policy tonight to the planning commission, it will not get done in time. They are very well-intentioned people, but their plate is full, it always is full, and they would not be able to make it the priority that it needs to be. This is time-sensitive now. If you send it back to the city manager without a resolution that contains a due-back date, I'm afraid that it will face the same fate. I am asking you to send it to city management with a due-back-to-the-council-table date, no later than one month, asking in the resolution for a shortening and a simplifying of the policy. I mean, I think that's doable, and I hope you will. Thank you.
Thank you. Toby Goslin? Good evening.
Smile. I like that. I'm not here to scold you, I'm not here to embarrass you, I'm not here to harass you. I watch you on TV, and I come every once in a while, and I have a message for you. First, I want to thank Mr. Surlag and your staff. I know you are the unsung heroes. You work hard every single day, and I know the council, you're working really hard. This is a very hard time for you. We're in the spotlight of a lot of controversies, but I want to thank you. You have been impeccable, you've been on task, you are quiet and silent, and you don't show your emotion, but we are paying attention, and I want to thank you. And please extend that to your employees here in the building. It's very quiet in the building, there are very few employees. Thank you, Mr. Bloomingdale, what you said, I agree. They've taken a huge hit. But smile. I have been knocking on doors. Democracy is alive and well. Thank you. Freedom of speech. I have never been a petition passer. I've never been involved in government. My name is Goslin. It's not a good name to have in Troy or Oakland County, I've learned from knocking on some doors. But what I want you to know is what I've experienced. As the public is watching this on TV, and maybe the media is going to cover it, 56,940 registered voters in the city of Troy, 74 percent failed to vote on November 8, 2011. Ms. Daniels, you received 7,709 votes. When I have interacted, I don't consider that a majority, it's a very low turnout. There is a silent majority stepping up now. This little recall that they talk about, I can tell you, from my personal experience, it is rolling. Either you jump on the train or get out of the way, because the train's coming. And I can tell you, I've knocked on doors, I've been on the east side, west side, north side, and maybe I'm just a good ambassador, I'm a good listener, I'm not vindictive, I'm not political, I don't belong to either side. I'm not angry, I'm not hateful, but I've been bumped, I've been pointed at, I've been screamed at, and I've seen a lot of really bad behavior. I'm sorry that this resident feels that she's been inconvenienced by a doorbell. Just don't answer your door. I can say that some of the seniors have come out and hugged me on the front porch and thanked me and blessed me, that feels really good. I want to know what is so hard about being the mayor? It's a ceremonial position, it's an honor, that person is an ambassador, somebody that's impeccable with their words, intelligent, a leader, a good role model for our kids. But bigotry, hatred is not to be tolerated. I'm hearing that from all kinds of people, whether you're Asian, Indian, black, gay. People are lining up. I have turned in so many petitions, I've lost count. I have some here tonight that are waiting to be turned in. There's a message in this. People are speaking out, there's a silent majority. You need to pay attention, enjoy recalls. And please tell the citizens that this recall is in November, which is a general election. There's no cost to Troy. People are screaming, you're costing us money, another election. People, this is a general November presidential election. You know it, you're in government, I don't need to tell you. But the residents need to learn and pay attention, step up. When you fail to vote, you hand the torch to whoever is running and whoever is going to win. In our case here, Ms. Daniels won by 600 votes. If 601 showed up out of the 56,000 people, we would have had a different outcome. It's the meanness that's coming across. The people say, there's a meanness. They see mean in your face, you don't smile, you don't welcome, they see mean. I'm sure you can work on that and you can make change there, but in the meantime, people are stepping up, and there's a really loud message here. Democracy is alive and well. I'm doing a civic duty. I don't mean to bother this resident who doesn't want to answer her door. There's a lot of people who don't answer their doors, but there's a whole lot that are. So as the council gets ready for the budget, or perhaps an unfortunate replacement who will never replace Mr. Surlag, but if he chooses to go through it, I would never hold you back. I think you deserve all that is coming to you, you've worked hard, you've had a career, an honorable career, and you deserve the best. We will miss you, hope you don't go, but the council has work to do, and it's hard. So thank you for your service.
Thank you, Mrs. Goslin.
Good evening.
Good evening, council. Where can you find the best city to live in Michigan that is also one of the safest in the nation and second most ethnically diverse in the state? What city offers affordable housing, A-plus rated schools, quality public services, and a solid bond rating? a solid bond rating? In fact, one of the few AAA-rated cities in Michigan, the city of Troy. While Troy maintains its hometown charm, the city's a vibrant business and technology center and a community recognized for its civic spirit and quality of life. This comes right from our city's website. This is not just a great city. It's a magnificent one, and that's due to the fine caliber of employees who serve this city. The same employees who have sacrificed and helped out due to our budget constraints. In speaking of the recent cuts and concessions made by the Troy Police Department and other city employees, our esteemed city manager, John Zurlag, said, "It further underscores the excellence and professionalism of the city's employees who remain dedicated to preserving a high quality of life in this community. Our challenge is to maintain this record of excellence in the face of shrinking resources. If we can accomplish that, I am confident we'll remain one of the premier places to live and do business, not only in southeast Michigan, but in the entire nation," end quote. Mr. Zurlag is responsible for spearheading the solutions to our budget. He's well-known and respected in his field. As L. Brooks Patterson said, "I've worked with many city managers within our 61 communities in Oakland County, and John stands out as simply the best. He's knowledgeable, trustworthy, responsive, and enjoys an excellent reputation, not only within my administration, but within his peer group," end quote. This was in response to you, Mayor, after you unjustifiably assailed him and city staff at a recent city council meeting. Not only was this an embarrassment for him and his staff, but also, once again, an embarrassment that our mayor would behave in such a manner. You say you have business skills. What about simple people skills? Brooks went on further to state, "John Zurlag has my full support as an outstanding city manager, and I look forward to working with him for years to come," end quote. While those years may not come, as we know, Mr. Zurlag's been offered the position of city manager in another state. Our city manager, who L. Brooks Patterson has claimed is one of the finest managers, is being courted by another municipality. As reported by Fox Four in Florida, "Zurlag scored high with city council members, including the mayor, because of the issues he faced as two-time city manager in Troy," end quote. "He's done a lot of things in Troy that he's going to have to deal with in Cape Coral, including union negotiations, as well as utilities, as well as police and fire issues," Mayor John Sullivan said. Yes, Mayor, you heard it right. Mr. Zurlag is applauded and respected for the way he's managed the city of Troy. However, there are those, many of whom are in this audience tonight, they're willing to help him pack his bags. These same people are the ones that supported you for mayor. Makes one wonder what criteria is used by them for evaluating people. It also makes one wonder if, in fact, Mr. Zurlag does decide to take the position and leaves Troy. Why? Could it be all the turmoil you've created since being elected? I don't know if or what Mr. Zurlag's decided. I wish it could have impressed upon him that the majority of the citizens who want what is best for Troy do believe in him and do appreciate what he's accomplished. We don't want to see him leave. However, based on the treatment he's received from the mayor of all people, I wouldn't blame him. This is just another of the fallout since your election. We lost our finance manager and have not been able to replace him. Could he have looked for similar reasons? I wouldn't be surprised. How can Troy expect to attract world-class employees such as Mr. Zurlag and the rest of our fine employees when we have a mayor that has no respect for them and is constantly bringing bad press to the area? Not to mention, we're no longer competitive. Ms. Seer from HR confirms that, as a result of being leading edge in managing and containing pay and benefits during this economic turmoil, we'll not be competitive in the market. As she states, "We have little or no success in attracting candidates for positions requiring significant skill or education, and we've lost valuable, experienced employees to positions paying more than the city of Troy," end quote. I know you have a bigger agenda, one that focuses on the national level, but why would you say you love Troy and are dedicated and then treat our fine staff that way? People keep saying the recall's because our candidate didn't get elected. That's not true. Every day you're in office shows the citizens that, in fact, it's because of what's happened since you got elected. Think of Troy. Take your political agenda elsewhere. Let us start to heal this tarnished reputation you've brought on us. Please make the right ethical and moral decision. Resign. Mr. Zurlag, I wish you the best, whatever your decision. And as far as the incident with the person who was approached by a petitioner...
Thank you, Mrs.
...we were taught not to be polite. We were taught to be polite. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. My name is Chrissy Boylan, and I'm here today as a former resident of Troy, one who went through the Troy Public School District from kindergarten at Schroeder through Bowlin and through Troy High School, and one who has been very proud of this city since she was born and loved to tell people, "I'm from Troy, Michigan." I now live in the state of Virginia, where we know controversy as well. And I can tell you that I'm more embarrassed to be from Troy, Michigan, than I am from the state of Virginia. A previous speaker mentioned a crusade. You yourself mentioned we need to uphold decorum in this fine city, and I find that truly ironic. I can neither confirm or deny these specific tactics or comments made by people who are trying to push forward this recall. I am just here to show you on how you look from afar. You look ridiculous, and you are an embarrassment. Keith Oberman, the worst person in the whole world. The Atlantic Magazine, the second dumbest local politics scandal in America. I am no longer proud to be from here. And so that's so much so that I and many others have changed our hometown on Facebook. We no longer say we are from Troy. You are an embarrassment, and you've made this city a laughingstock. And if you truly care about the city of tomorrow today, you would step aside and let the city get to its work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Evening. As a representative of the recall, I must address the comments accusing the recall workers of harassing Troy citizens. When we undertook this effort, we trained over 75 volunteers to help in our efforts. We instructed our volunteers to simply politely ask people for support, and if a person indicated that they didn't want a sign, simply to move on to the next person. Personally, I've collected over 300 signatures in this effort, even in the face of name-calling, harassment, and insults. But even in those instances, I've met the heart of Troy. I met a gay couple who's lived here for 15 years and are raising a daughter and want to live in Troy because of the Troy schools. They told me that when your comment came out last November, they would have moved but for the Troy schools. I met a Greek immigrant who believes, who grew up in Greece and took the train all over Greece. She believes in the transit center and the functions that government can do to make things better. I've met Indian immigrants who recognize and see extremists who signed my petition because they are afraid of the Tea Party and what they stand for. I'm not discouraged by any of this. I'm heartened because I recognize that democracy is a messy process. So I would remind this council that we are acting upon our rights, and we will continue to politely ask Troy citizens to support our efforts as found in the Michigan Constitution. So despite the opinions of some, this is not the first step towards anarchy. This is democracy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Hello. Charlene Feminino, what am I, 26-year resident of Troy? And I had to say, I was reading here in the paper, you know, about what they're saying that you're so terrible because you referred to the Troy City Charter as a whimsical document. You declared during an office hours forum on January 9th that the homosexual lifestyle is dangerous, publicly attacking city employees, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And I mean, to tell you the truth, I'm just amazed that they didn't put down on the recall that you were the Bride of Satan Beelzebub, or maybe Hitler's unknown spawn from the way that these people are attacking you with these trivial things. I mean, it's really amazing. But when you read Rules for Radicals, then it really comes to light where all this stuff is coming from. As Saul Alinsky says, "Many liberals during our attack on the then-school superintendent were pointing out that he wasn't 100% devil. He was a regular churchgoer. He was a good family man, and he was generous in his contributions to charity." Can you imagine, in an arena of conflict, charging that so-and-so is a racist SOB and then diluting the impact of the attack with qualifying remarks such as, "He is a good church-going man, generous to charity, and a good husband"? This is where this comes from. You know, you have to be portrayed as the total repository of all evil in the universe by these people. This is the handbook. And as to your remarks regarding homosexuality, well, I like to watch Alice Dallas. And James, in the last episode, when he was moving to California, himself made a remark that Ashley, the young gal that hung around with all these guys, that he wasn't sure if she realized what a dangerous and violent lifestyle this is. Those are his own words. So I don't see that you're telling anybody anything that especially people in the gay community don't already know. Your crime is, you tell the truth. Your crime is, is that you weren't the candidate that was supposed to win. So they're going to name-call, they're going to slander and defame you to try to justify this recall, because there's really no basis, that I can find, significant to justify what's going on. And as for Keith Oberman, well, wasn't that the guy who just got fired the second time from a TV station? So we should listen to Keith Oberman, who's known for his slandering and defaming and vicious attacks on anybody that disagrees with him. But this is the tactic of the left. See, they don't have rational, thoughtful arguments. They rely totally on emotion. That's why they don't talk about the issues. They just name-call, which is what they've been doing to you since you were alive. And so I don't think that they're going to want to back down on this, but we'll be out there supporting you. And, you know, it's really a shame that people... You know, I personally am not a hater, and it's unfortunate if other people are. I just think this whole thing is really an embarrassment to Troy. And then people talk about you being an embarrassment, as though when Gene Stein's husband was shooting up the kitchen appliances, he got national coverage. I mean, you're not... All you did was use words. He was shooting live rounds which can travel as far as a mile. Somebody, his neighbors, could have been killed when he was doing that.
Point of order. We did this before, and that really has nothing to do with this conversation.
It does... Well, that's your opinion. That's your opinion.
Mrs. Feminino, could we move on to another issue?
Right. Well, I just wanted to be here to say that you have a lot of supporters. I look at this personally as an attempt to disenfranchise all the people who voted for you because they're sore losers. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. James Griggs?
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. Excuse me. Another month's gone by, and we still don't have any status that I can determine on the default of the Troy Downtown Development Authority bonds. There seems to be nothing on the website. There seems to be more cancellation of the downtown development meetings without any reason. I don't think council directs the mayor to cancel the downtown development hearings. I think that it should be on the website... Excuse me. The people of Troy should know why they are continually canceling the meetings of the Downtown Development Authority, and when we are going to go into default, the exact date as it looks now, and who's going to pay for the defaulted bonds. On the other hand, is the, quote, Troy Chamber of Commerce Club, which represents a little less than 7% of the businesses in Troy, made up of members that live in Troy and not in Troy. They at one time claimed they were going to guarantee that we wouldn't lose money on the annual maintenance of this so-called Transit Center. Where is that signed agreement that they guaranteed and since then disappeared? I think it's important to the voters of Troy. People are hurting. The city is sitting on this, just like for, I guess, more than eight years, they sat on the Transit Center itself. How long do we have to keep the Transit Center open? Should it go really, really bad? How many years will the taxpayers of Troy have to pay to keep that Transit Center open so we won't forfeit the millions of dollars of Social Security money, in my opinion, that we're using to build the Transit Center, so we don't go into default of that? Because I understand we've got to build that by a certain date, and we've got to keep it open, and we've got other restrictions that we've got to follow. Otherwise, we default on the whole program, and we have to pay those millions and millions and millions of dollars back. There just doesn't seem to be any answers forthcoming. And now that Mr. Zurlag, it looks like he's going to take the second mayor's job in Florida in the last 10, what, 10, 15 years, like he did before. We won't have him, and maybe we should get a statement from the acting controller as to how much it's going to cost the residents of Troy if those bonds go into default, and how it will affect our other bonds. I think that we need to face that and face it quickly, because the voters of Troy are watching, listening, and learning and wondering what's going on. I have people talk about that all the time. What about the default on the bonds? Who's going to pay for it? We go down 16 Mile, and you see all the tax waste of money on that 16-mile road project where you've got too many trees, so you can't see Somerset Mall and the stores, because all you see is a forest. Before, it was nicely landscaped, and then they put in all those trees. I would hope you could plan to thin out some of those trees so the people, again, they want to go shopping in that area, could see the trees and the pedestrians and the other traffic. But, you know, it just seems like, week in and week out, this council doesn't have any answers, but they'll spend, spend, spend. They're going to spend on the traffic transit center, no matter what. Rebuilding the third Transit Center within a few miles of Troy. The one in Pontiac, the one in Royal Oak, and the one in Birmingham, which Birmingham will not rebuild the Transit Center. They don't see a justification for it. But we want the couple of people, each train, to have a magnificent facade to join the train, like they're going to instead of going to Birmingham and walking to platform, the train station. They're going to drive to Troy, ride up a, what, four-story elevator, go across a Passover bridge, down a four-story one, and then hop the train? You know, it just... It's nonsensical. You know, it's just unbelievable. And that's why so many businessmen are opposed to the train station.
Thank you, Mr. Griggs. That concludes the people who have signed up to speak. If there are any other people in the audience who would like to speak... Mr. Bloomingdale, if you'd like to come up, I'd like to see if anyone else wants to speak first. Mr. Chair Sero?
Mayor, point of order. I think that they've already spoken and had their time. I think if you look at our guidelines, they are not allowed to speak again in public comment.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, members of the city council. To Mr. Zurlag, if you decide to take the job in Florida, thank you for your service and good luck down there. I represent the committee to recall tax wasters. During the public comments of the last several council meetings, I've heard on at least two occasions that Troy has the lowest tax rate, Millich, in the area. This was meant to infer that Troy residents pay lower taxes than other cities in the area. This is not true. First of all, since the Millich vote in August, we have put our rate over the 10 mil mark, moving us higher on the list. But this is only one component of the tax equation. The second part of the tax equation is the taxable value of your home. In most cases, the taxable value is equal to the state equalized value, or SEV, of your property. And that is about 50 percent... your property, and that is about fifty percent of the selling price of the home. The city with the second highest total SEV in the state is not Lansing, it's not Flint, it's not Benton Harbor, it's not Kalamazoo, nor is it Saginaw. The second-largest total SEV in the state belongs to the city of Troy. We do not possess any large industrial sites to push this number up. It's mostly dependent on the property value of your homes. Do not let anyone fool you. You are paying very large taxes, and people are trying to fool you into believing that your tax bill is low. That is just a lie. And in fact, if you take a good look at the information sent to you at the end of February, you're going to find out that the SEVs were pushed up two and a half percent. The second topic for the evening is the reserves and the budget. The city council has authorized a reserve to be between ten and fifteen percent. As of early December, Troy had a reserve balance of twelve point five million dollars, which amounted to twenty-three percent of the operating budget. I do not know what the balance is today, because we had a very mild winter, and funds which should have been spent on snow removal will now be added to this figure. This seems to be a very large sum to carry. I'd like answers to the following two questions. One, who authorized the increase over the fifteen percent figure? That was supposed to be the high end. Two, what is this reserve for? I thought that in times of crises, we would use reserve money to pay some of the bills, but obviously, we don't. This number was more than enough to keep the library open seven days a week without increasing the millage to do so. The information was known to the last mayor and the city council prior to the millage vote. And even after the millage passed, the last mayor and at least three remaining members of that council voted to keep the library closed on its busiest day, Saturday. As I said at the beginning, tax, 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 spend, spend, spend. Thank you.
Thank you. Did anyone else want to come to the podium to speak? Mr. Neat?
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name's Edward Neat. I've been a Troy resident going on twenty-four years. The first twenty-one, I voted in elections, I voted the school elections, because I felt I didn't have a chance. I basically felt that school board employees were nominated by school unions and then voted for, and because, as already has been repeated, ten to fifteen percent of the people usually only showed up for those votes in August, so those people got in. About three and a half years ago, I started to get involved, because I started hearing things about that Troy didn't have a spending problem, they had a revenue problem. And so I got involved in the February 2010 election, and I did my investigations. We moved into Troy in 1989. We built a house. Our taxes started out at about fifty-five hundred. In 2008, they were at about seventy-three hundred. So along came the 2000 February 10 vote. Again, I did a lot of investigation, and I was told, well, your taxes were going down five hundred, and so if you vote for not the twenty-seven percent, but only the, I think it was two point seven percent increase, which I thought it was a twenty percent, twenty-seven percent increase in the city tax, that they would only go up another four hundred, so I should be happy that I'm paying a hundred dollars less. I asked the question of those people that were office back then, have any cuts, spending cuts, budget cuts been made? Well, no. So I voted no on that proposal, and two-thirds of the other city voted no. Then came along the Troy Friends of the Library, and our dear library was threatened with closure along with the historical, the nature, and the senior community center, which found was self-funded. So I voted no on that also. I thought that was retribution for not voting yes on Prop eight. Then along came in August, the vote, we really are going to close your library, and if you don't vote yes, that's what's going to happen. I again voted no. Then came the election in November last year, and again, I did my investigation. I had a college professor a long time ago that brought up the old Japanese business saying, nail that stands up gets hammered down. And I think that's what's happening with our mayor, Janice Daniels. If you have a floor, an oak floor in your house, what do you do? You go to that nail that stands up and you hammer it down. From the second council meeting, I've been to every single council meeting for the last year and a half at this city, and I missed one because I was on vacation. And I didn't want to speak till I knew what was going on in my city. And believe me, it doesn't take too long. It takes about three or four council meetings to figure out what's going on in the city. I gladly would have voted yes for the first Prop eight. And I think the former mayor and council majority, there were two on the council that said we didn't need a tax increase from my investigation. I would have voted for that, but I said, no, I want to see the cuts first. And again, they weren't across the board like they hoped they would have been. They hit what I thought were people that wanted to make us suffer so that we would go for a tax increase. The thing with the Transit Center, I see a change in vote there. I don't see Ms. Hodges here for the last several meetings. I'm afraid down the road, there'll be a special assessment for that. I hope that doesn't happen. Again, I'm not a very good speaker, I've never spoken in front of groups, but I just had to come here and, now that I've been here for all these meetings, to speak my mind. As far as the recall, I've had some people that have been approached that have told me, oh, please sign this, I'm going to lose my job if you don't. Oh, don't worry about the Transit Center, you won't have to pay for it. So there is, I think, a lot of swaying and slanting, along with the Detroit News, the Detroit Free Press, Channel Seven, and I could go on and on. The mayor won, unlike some of the people that have come up here and said, you're illegitimate, because only twenty-seven percent of the people voted. I could say the same thing about Councilman Campbell. He only won by fifty-seven votes. But I'm not recalling Council Campbell, he won the election fair and square. So I wish these recall people would stop, and let's get on with business in Troy. I attended last year's two budget meetings, and I'll be attending the next two. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wanted to speak? Mr. Shepke?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. I appreciate it. I wasn't going to get up tonight. If Troy is the laughingstock of the world, it's because of the way the residents, at least some of the residents, have conducted themselves. You haven't had a minute's peace since you've been in office. Some of the same people are going after you for other things, went after you for violation of the oath or whatever, from the time you got up there. You have been treated very disrespectfully. You have been treated not like the mayor, the majority of the people. They not only disrespect, when they disrespect you, they disrespect us as voters of the city of Troy. We deserve better, and you definitely deserve better. Too many times in this world, I've seen when people can't win on the issues, what they do is personally attack or try to shout down people. I've witnessed some of the bullying on the petition collecting, and I don't advocate that at all. I think anybody that's collecting signatures on a petition should do it according to the charges on that petition, and that only. I think that's the proper way to do it. Tonight, we said the pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. You haven't had no justice since you've been in office. You haven't had any respect by a certain group of people since you've been in office, and God bless you for putting up with it. And the poor students that were in here last week to get their signatures for school or something like that, to listen to the bullying that you had to sit up there and take with a smile, it broke my heart. What an example, as adults we're setting for our younger generation. We ought to be ashamed for that kind of behavior. Thank you for your time, and bless your heart. Thank you.
Thank you. I've been told you're not allowed to speak a second time. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Looks like that concludes public comments. Did we want to take a break before we move on to the response? Looks like there's some consensus for a break. I move that we recess for five minutes.